Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Springsberry Township Board of Supervisors' continued conditional use hearing. We are here this evening to hear from applicant Shiny Shell Car Wash. And to govern tonight's proceedings from a conditional use perspective, I'd like to turn this part of the meeting over to our solicitor, Corey Dillinger. Corey?
Good evening, everybody. We are here today for a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Shiny Shell Car Wash, Coldwater Development LLC. The applicant is seeking a conditional use approval to construct a 5,174 square-foot automatic car wash to include 21 vacuum stations and a playground for children on an approximately 1.96 acre site located at 3021 East Market Street, York, Pennsylvania 17402, in accordance with Section 325-197 Point C1 of the Springsberry Township zoning ordinance. In a second, I'll talk about kind of procedurally how we'll do things tonight, but for now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Heilmann, the Director of Community Development, to discuss the hearing notice dates and some submissions received from the applicant and other parties. Turn it over to Mr. Heilmann.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. The public notice was sent out to be advertised on February 29th of this year as well as March 7th of this year. The property was also posted last week to make the public aware of this pending public hearing. We received the original application in November. I think it's, bear with me one quick second, I think November 14th of 2023. It did go to the Planning Commission in December 21st, 2023, as a briefing item, and it came back to the Planning Commission for their February PC meeting. And at that time, the Planning Commission made a recommendation of approval for the modifications and waivers as well as the, as well as the master plan that was presented by the applicant as well. Is there any other additional information that you deem necessary for these purposes?
I think that's fine for now.
And what I do want to say quickly is, they did receive letter, review letters from First Capital Engineering through the process, and they also received a PC summary as well for the case summary, as well as the Board of Supervisors have received a case summary for this project as well. So there's information that's been provided to the Planning Commission and to the Board in that regard. All the other information has been provided that was presented by the applicant to Springsberry Township. So the Planning Commission had all the materials available to them, as well as now the Board of Supervisors have that same information electronically available to them this evening. And we do have representation for the project tonight from Chris Coons, representing Penoni, and we also have Mr. Nick Ord, who's representing the developer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heilmann. And we can just let the record show that three members of the Board of Supervisors are here in person, and we do have two other members via Zoom, and they're able to hear us and participate tonight. So just let the record show that.
That's correct. Two are here, two are on Zoom.
Apologies. Yep, two and two. Yep. So procedurally, how we're going to do things, the applicant will put forth their evidence and their witnesses. After the applicant is done with each witness, the Board or any objector would have an opportunity to cross-examine that witness. After the applicant rests their case, any objector may put on their case against a conditional use application. Any witness that objector would put on would also be opened up to cross-examination. After the objectors rest their case, the Board may have some follow-up questions for the applicant, and then we'll also listen to public comment as well. After that, the Board may deliberate and has the power tonight to make a decision. Before we get started, I'd like to just do this in the beginning, I'd like to ask if anyone would seek party objector status. Briefly, that would mean someone opposing the party who would want standing to be able to appeal that. I can explain that further, but at first, I would just ask if anyone is interested in that. Let the record show that I don't believe that anyone is interested in that. So don't worry about that for now. One last item, we do have a stenographer here today memorializing the hearing. Just please be mindful of that and try not to talk over each other. If the Board doesn't have anything else to add, I will go ahead and swear in any witnesses that will provide testimony tonight, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant to begin their testimony. So if anyone wishes to speak tonight in support or against the application, if you want to rise and raise your right hand, I can swear you in. All right. Do you swallow me swear that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So with that being said, unless the Board has anything to add, or if Mr. Luciani or Mr. Heilmann have anything to add, I will go ahead and turn it over to the applicant.
I do not have any.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
And I would say, just before you start, if you could provide a stenographer with your name for the record.
Fair thing. Good evening. My name is Nick Ord. I'm with Shiny Shell Car Wash. Yeah, first name is Nick, N-I-C-K, last name is Ord, O-R-D, Zandelt. I'm with Shiny Shell Car Wash. It's a pleasure to be here with you all this evening. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to, joined with me is Chris Coons, as was mentioned, our consulting engineer from Penoni, and he'll be, he'll be joining me to get into some more of the details of the plan, but before that, I just wanted to introduce our project and provide a little bit more background information for you about our company and more specifically what we are proposing to bring to the township.
First name's Chris, C-H-R-I-S, last name is K-O-O-N-Z.
And your company?
I'm with Penoni, P-E-N-N-O-N-I.
Thank you. Mr. Heilmann, yeah, could you, thank you, you're on top of it. There we go. Perfect. Let me see if I can get this to work.
Is that presentation?
That is. Thank you, you're on the right presentation. There we go. Just, okay. So we're Shiny Shell Car Wash. We are building a modern express car wash, fully automated car wash, and we're hoping to come to your township. As was mentioned, we are under contract to purchase the property at 303021 East Market Street, currently kind of known as where the Barnhart Inn is, to give some reference to that property. Just on the, on the cover here, this is one of our existing facilities, a sample of kind of typically what we will build with our car wash. It's not your typical, what we call self-serve car wash, where you pull in and get out and wash your own vehicle. It's a high-tech, modern facility that is meant to do really the best the industry has to offer in cleaning vehicles. Just kind of high level, so typically what people, our patrons will do as they come onto the site, they stay in their vehicle and they will pull into, behind this building here are what we call like a pay lanes, similar to almost like a drive-through lane. They pay for their wash or sign up for a monthly membership with one of our patrons. They stay in their vehicle, and then they go in and they stay in the vehicle as they go through the car wash. So employees will load them onto a conveyor, they stay in the car, and then they have, they come out the other side. It takes about two and a half minutes for them to go through the actual car wash, and then they have the chance to pull into our parking lot, which is a parking lot that has a central vacuum system with what we call vacuum arches, you can kind of see on the photo, and customers can get out and vacuum their own car if they wish to. Maybe I need to point at the, oh, there we go. I just need to be a little bit more patient. So this is another sample site of ours up on this facility in particular is up in Harrisburg on Jonestown Road. And just to kind of give a little bit more of the flow, so customers would pull in on this site, they come down, they stay in their vehicle, they stack along the side, they pay right, actually, right here, there's a drive-up window as well. They come through the car wash, out the other side, and they can either exit or pull into the vacuum lot, as I previously mentioned. So that's kind of a typical flow for our patrons. And again, it, somebody could be in and out of our facility in about three minutes. So we are trying to be a convenient use for our customers and for the residents here. And so we try to go in places where people are already going, where they're doing weekly shopping, things of that nature, because we are becoming more of a convenient use for them, that they can come on a weekly basis if they wish, as they sign up for an unlimited membership. Just some highlights of our equipment and the facilities that we provide. So we use license plate reading technology. So when a customer signs up for a membership, they say, hey, yeah, I want to sign up for the membership. There's a camera there that basically reads their license plate, saves it with their card, and now anytime they roll through, come to the car wash, there is a, you can kind of see here, there's an automatic gate. The camera will read their plate, it'll say, welcome, Bill, and the gate will go up and they don't, they can just pull right in and then be loaded onto the conveyor. Inside of our car wash, really open, really clean. As I mentioned before, we use really the state-of-the-art equipment, really the industry, the best the industry has to offer inside of our, inside of our car wash. At our, at our vacuum stations, we offer some added features, some freebies, we call them, for our patrons to use. So just things like microfiber towels to really kind of get in and dry the rest of their car, clean the inside, provide glass cleaner, all-purpose cleaner, compressed air at every vacuum station, along with a bigger claw kind of vacuum tool, as well as a smaller narrow crevice tool. So our customers love it, they can, if they want to, they can pull in and really get the inside of their car clean. We also provide, we have trash cans at each one of those stations, we make it easy for people to throw away their trash, they're not having to walk across the parking lot. You can kind of see here, we have a trash can at every single parking stall. We've got automatic mat cleaners. So this machine that you kind of see over here on the left, you actually put your floor mats in there, whether they're carpet or rubber, and it'll do either a dry or a wet cycle, wash the mat and kind of put it out clean on the other side, or you can take it and then put it back in your car. And then we also have like a, kind of a self-serve or mat spray station for customers to clean their mats as well. So just trying to do a lot of things for our customers to be able to get the inside of their cars clean. Something that's maybe unique to us, or we haven't seen other car washes do, we have what we call our Members Lounge. So I mentioned that customers can sign up for a monthly membership, where they pay, they pay a monthly fee, and they can come as many times as they want in a month. In that Members Lounge, we'll typically have like, we try to have it be a family-friendly environment, so we'll have like a, you know, we offer free soda for people who sign up for our member, our memberships. And then, a little bit hard to see in this photo, but on the center here, this is actually a gun that's, excuse me, water gun, that's connected through this window here. It's for kids to spray the cars with water as they're going through the car wash tunnel, and it's pretty fun, kids love it. Many of our facilities, we utilize playgrounds as well. As we get into the plan, you'll see that we have, we have a proposed playground at this site. It's actually a very highly commented-on feature from our customers, they love it. We fence in those play areas and try to make it a safe environment. We've found that as customers have been getting out of their cars and they're vacuuming them, naturally, if they have kids that are kind of moving around in the car as they're trying to vacuum, they end up getting out of the car anyways. And so actually building somewhere safe where kids can go has been a great addition to our sites, and just trying to make it a family-friendly environment. Just some quick other things about us, Shiny Shell, we're an owner-operator, so we're not franchise, so we develop the properties, but we also, we are the end user. We, I kind of clipped through the other things already here, but we try to really be community-environment focused. So we use advanced filtration and reclamation systems that allow us to reuse up to 70% of our water. So if someone is going to wash their car, it's a much more efficient use of water to wash it at our facility than, especially than if they were to wash it at home. All of our soaps and detergents are safe for sewer systems, but even before they do that, they pass through multiple sediment filters and reclaim tanks and grease-trapped tanks, that's just pulling out additional stuff before it gets deposited into the sewer system. And then we're, you know, we've got a great team, we've, we pride ourselves on being a safe and fun place to work and provide great employment opportunities in the community, and we try to partner with the community for things. We do a lot of like fundraisers, things with local high schools, things of that nature. We've got a couple of open facilities in the area, mostly in Harrisburg at this point. We have another one under construction right now out in West Manchester Township. That one will be open later this year. Would invite you to, anytime you're in around these areas, stop by and try us out and see what we're hoping to bring to your community. Just kind of, I wanted to just high-level go into the plan before I turn it over to Chris, just to more explain kind of how we envision this, this, our facility overlaying onto this site. The boundaries of this lot are somewhat challenging in that it's very, it's kind of a flag-shaped lot, and now I will call out, to make it kind of fit in this presentation, I've turned probably what you're seeing on the plan. So just to give some bearings, this is Market Street out here on the left-hand side, and our building is oriented perpendicular to Market Street. So this, this property is pretty narrow from what we would typically be able to build on, has kind of a narrow pinch point, and so that's created some challenges that we've really tried to design around. And we think that we, I've come up with something that will work for, work for us and our customers and be a great safe use of the, of the property there. So the overall flow, customers would come in, make a right-hand turn into the entrance, they would then come, keep kind of coming down the drive aisle here along this side, and then we kind of have a flexible entrance. So on, most of the time, customers would turn in right here and come down the pay lanes and pay for their wash. If there were the few days a year when it's right after, it's a sunny day right after a nice snowstorm and we've got more stacking going on, we have, we would have the ability to close this off and then stack cars even further back and just have them come around this way. After cars go through the car wash, they would exit down here on the side, and they could either just turn right and then right back out on the Market Street and be on their way, or if they wish, they can pull back into one of our vacuum stalls to vacuum out their car and then be on their way afterwards. So that's kind of the general flow that we're envisioning for the site. You probably have seen these already in some of the packets that you've been provided, but these are just some renderings that we've, of our current design of what we're looking, how we envisioning the site looking here. So we're, you know, really trying to incorporate architectural elements that are going to, one, just coordinate and go well with the, you know, with just, I guess, the conditional plan, or excuse me, the town center overlay there. Just kind of clip through these. Most of our, most of our public interactions would actually happen if customers are getting out of their cars, would happen kind of towards the back right of the store here. So this is where we're kind of envisioning that Members Lounge. We'd have an office here with our patrons, or excuse me, with our employees, where they could interact with patrons if they needed to. So that's kind of what happens there. I will add something that I missed before is that we're not open 24 hours a day. We are more of a retail use, so we're typically open from, say, 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and we always have employees on site. So we always will have at least two, but usually when we're busy, excuse me, busier, we'll have three, four, or five employees on the site. Just a couple of other renderings here. Again, this just kind of shows that kind of flexible area that allows us to stack more cars if needed. That's really kind of a high level of Shiny Shell Car Wash, where we're excited to, to come to your township, as I mentioned before. I'm happy to either answer questions now, or I can turn it over to Chris here to kind of go through more of the specifics with the modification requests and the specifics of the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I think before we go into engineering specifics, if the Board has any questions for what was just, for the evidence just presented, I'll give you the time to ask them.
Mr. Chairman, a couple if we could.
All right. Supervisor Cox, go ahead.
Nick, the, as I understand it, the car wash provides an exterior car wash.
That is correct.
And the ability for the customer to clean in his own vehicle inside, outside in one of the stalls. Is there any extra charge for using the stall, or is that all included in the price?
That's all included with the price of the car wash.
Okay. And the only other question I had, there seems to be a cut through after you go through the pay station that's one way out into the drive aisle, and I'm wondering what that's for.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. That is what we called an escape lane. So if, if someone has pulled in, you know, they've come around and they've gone through the stacking, and maybe they get up here, there are some limitations on the vehicles we could, we can wash, or if they just decide, you know what, actually, I don't want to, I don't want to buy this car wash, rather than having to get them to try to turn around and interrupt the flow of traffic. We have a, just kind of a one-way out that would allow vehicles to turn and go out before going into the car wash. I will note that those, we typically put those in at our sites, they're, they're used very infrequently, you know, maybe once or twice a week, if that, and they're, you know, something that when it happens, our employee is guiding them to say, here you go, let me show you the exit.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. I think that's all I had.
Gentlemen online, any questions?
Yeah, just curious, do you have any other design elements for your buildings other than the super bright orange and blue? Just wondering about how that fits in with the, with the surrounding character.
Sure. Yeah, we, let me get back to maybe a better rendering here. The orange and blue is typical of our brand. We did try to tie in this kind of, it's a wood-like product, something that's, that would hopefully tie in a little bit more to the retail uses color-wise that are directly to the west of us. But right now, we're, you know, what we're proposing is kind of the orange and blue and then just glazing on the building.
Don, any questions? Okay. Mark, anything further?
Not for now.
I'm sorry, you're good?
Yep, not for now.
All right. I did have one question with regard to the location of the dumpster, and maybe this is more so for your engineer, but its location is of size and accessibility for the regular garbage truck, and we've tested that. Okay.
Yeah, and we can, we have some turn exhibits, turn radius exhibits, and I'll let Chris speak to that as we come up, but yeah, accessibility-wise, typically we're having those picked up either early in the morning or before we close, and we're not concerned about the accessibility for that.
Okay. I had one other, are there multiple, in other words, do you have an exterior wash, an underbody cleaning, the tires and all that?
Yeah.
So you can build what size?
Yes, thank you. So we typically have three wash packages.
Gotcha.
And they vary in price based on what, what kind of cleaning action I'll call it you're getting on your vehicle, right? So we have a base wash that, that still has all of the friction in the brushes and the soaps, and then we have two packages above it that add waxes. Our top package actually has a ceramic wax on it. We use a, on that top package, let me just, I can scroll back here real fast. The very end of the car wash, this is a giant, basically a giant microfiber towel right behind the dryers. On those, those, those top packages, they'll get that, that helps just really dry the car before they come out, along with a tire shine, automatic tire shine that's applied at the end of the car wash. So it's just some features like that between that separate the packages.
Sure. Okay.
Yep. If there's no further questions, if you want to have your engineer testify?
Good evening. So my name's Chris Coons, I'm with Penoni, and working with Nick in Coldwater.
Please speak into the microphone.
Sorry, my name is Chris Coons with Penoni, and we are working with Nick in Coldwater on the design of this site. How do I get back to the, to the back button?
Could you bring up the plan?
Yeah, yeah, could you bring up the master? So a question, as I go through this site and kind of give you some background on it, I know we have these list of waivers, is that something, I should go through each one of them when I get to that and kind of explain?
Yes, please.
So as Mr. Heilmann said at the beginning, we did initially take this plan to the Planning Commission as a briefing item, because we wanted to get feedback and thoughts from the Planning Commission as to areas of concern, things that you might want changed. We got some good feedback from them and then took that information and tweaked the plan to kind of meet some of their concerns, and what you're looking at now is that, that presentation that we were going forward with. As I said, the existing site is a motel site. If you're unfamiliar with the site, let me get the, there we go. There's an existing single-family, oh, sorry, existing single-story, or I think it's three-story dwelling building here, which is used probably for the office, and then there's two motels that are the, say, single, single floor that run along the backside of the site. As Nick said, this was a very challenging site, it's very limited in some of the spaces and has a, you know, this pinch point that we have. Trying to get, trying to get just a red, oh, can't get it. It's got a bit of a pinch point right here across the site, and furthermore, the adjoining site to the east, which is owned by Verizon, is right on the property line. So in the design of the site, we wanted to minimize the grading on that side, so we actually had to raise the site up towards the back and get that to, to be level with that grade and then slope off to the other side. Trying to just forward it, it's not. Yeah, it's not. Here we go. So the site plan we have here, as Nick kind of pointed out, giving you guys some layout of the way things were going, one item that I maybe wasn't brought up that I want to just kind of bring attention to is, we do have back in here, we're showing a possible future expansion. At this time, that's not being pursued, because the way they're kind of leaving that is, they want to see what amount of traffic they get to the site. If they start seeing more traffic and a need for more vacuum stalls, then that was going to be a future expansion. With the design, however, we are going to be designing the stormwater system to, to account for that proposed future development, just so that there's no need to go back in and deal with any of that kind of stuff as we go forward. Believe we did talk about the parking stall, what parking was brought up, a total of, as we see, there's a 21 at the beginning for the Phase 1, and with the expansion, it would go up to 27, so there's only a few additional spaces that would be added with this design. I'm thinking at this time, I'm probably going to go through kind of the waiver requests, because as I go through that, that's going to cause me to kind of bring up some because as I go through that, that's going to cause me to kind of bring up some things about the site that were issues and the things that we had to go through. So, the first one I'd like to talk about was the number one, which is Section 289-35.C. We were requesting a modification of the landscape buffer yard requirement on the east side of the property along the Verizon site. So, I'm going to go forward here real quick to landscaping. So, we're... Sorry, thank you. So, the request of the buffer yard was just the property here has Verizon, so basically starting here at the, at the south where it meets, I'm blanking on the name, sorry, where it meets Market Street. My apologies. And going back to the corner here where it, where it breaks behind the Verizon site. Initially, we were looking at just doing a modification to make that a smaller area because of the limited space that we had. Obviously, because of that pinch point, once we kind of put in the building and with the parking here, we didn't have a lot of space there between the edge of the curb and the property line. Additionally, there is a easement on our property line that services utilities to the Verizon site that was, that's within our property. Talking with the Planning Commission, one of the things they asked was if we could widen the 24-foot cartway in front of the, of the parking stalls here, and we made that 28 feet. So, that would give a little bit more space for vehicles backing out to, to not cause a traffic jam, I would say, up here in the front, as, you know, if a vehicle was coming out of the car wash and making a left, their concern was that if a vehicle was also backing out at the same time, that there'd be kind of a jam there. So, so with those kind of modifications, it became very hard to get that easement, sorry, buffer yard in there. We, although we're requesting a waiver of the buffer yard itself, we are still providing all the required landscaping that would have been required if that buffer yard was still there. So, what we're going to do, what we're proposing is to add as much landscaping in here as we can, and then the additional required landscaping is being planted outside the, the back area of the site. So, that's kind of what, how that, how that kind of broke down. Another, the next one on here, Section 325-199.C, the main building setback along the north side of East Market Street. The ordinance requires that it has a minimum 25-foot, maximum 50-foot building setback. In conversations with the Planning Commission, they had a concern, obviously, of queuing here at the front of, front of the site. So, we actually took the building and pushed it back an additional 10 feet, and that gave us more queuing area there in the front, and I have an exhibit here later on at the end that will kind of show the number of vehicles we have queuing there. But that was, again, sort of direct feedback from the Planning Commission that we wanted to make sure we added to kind of meet their, some of their concerns about that site. The next one here is Section 325-200.G1, which is the entrance orientation of public buildings. Obviously, this is a car wash, and the front of the building, I guess you would technically call here where the, where the parking stalls are. Obviously, with the car wash and with the size of the layout, it's very difficult to get that building as close to Market Street as required and have the front facing that, because a car wash naturally wants to have vehicles come in the back and then come out the front. So, the site, the site geometry works nice for a car wash design, but it does require a slight modification to, I'm sorry, a waiver in that case, of us having the front of the building facing Market Street for this, for this layout. The next one, number four, which is...
And I guess, I hate to interrupt, but since there are a couple modifications, I guess I'll just ask the board, I mean, those first three that he went through, the made building setback, the landscape buffer, and what was the third one? Entrance orientation on public...
Entrance orientation of the building.
Does the board have any questions or comments on those?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, is there a side yard setback requirement? Because it looks like you're right on the property line.
There is not, there is not in this, in this zone, there was no setback or rear. There was only front setbacks. We are, we are, I believe, on this side about five, I want to say five to, I believe we're five to 10 feet, I think five feet off on, on both sides.
Mr. Luciani, would you want to comment on that? I think I heard you confirm that.
Yeah, the town center zone, obviously, there's a minimum, I'm sorry, a maximum setback. During the discussion at the Planning Commission, they tried to nudge the building as far as they could, as Mr. Coons explained, in order for the vehicles to exit properly, that building needed to be pushed back a little bit, and I thought, I believe that they've attempted to meet the town center requirements with the building location as shown on the plan.
Okay.
The only thing, while I have the mic, and I'll just point out, as Mr. Ord went through those nice graphic presentations, they did add a playground right before the car wash, but that wasn't shown on the graphic representation, but I believe it is shown on the site plan, but I think that's what we had talked about.
Yeah, so I can go back to that real quick. This area right here in the back, which will come up a little bit later as we get down here, we have a public plaza slash, that's the playground area. We're kind of calling that the public plaza area, and we're giving access via a sidewalk path from the...
Where, where is that? We don't see the, whatever marker you're using.
It is, okay. Let me see if I can get that.
Yeah, it's right, the escape lane.
Escape lane is?
Okay.
It's right there. And that does have, there's a sidewalk that will be able to be accessible from that that goes along the front of the building, comes across the sidewalk, and down to the main pedestrian sidewalk along Market Street that's proposed.
Excuse me, John, one, one other thing. There are no side setback requirements in the township overlay?
I don't believe there is.
The town overlay? Very surprised, I mean...
Yeah, I was a little surprised myself.
Usually, it's at least 25 feet, but...
The intent might have been to create that retail density.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I think, I think the intent of that was to be more like a city.
A town, or a town center.
All right. Any other questions on those before I proceed?
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, you may proceed.
I will confirm side yard is zero feet in that district. Thank you.
The next modification we requested was 325-200.G3, which is translucent and/or transparent materials, 25% minimum on each story below the roof line. With the design of what Nick has, Coldwater, the, the building we use here was as slim as possible because of the limitations to the width of the lot. So, there is, with some of the larger designs, the, they end up putting the, the mechanical rooms and stuff on this side, I'm sorry, on the backside, which would allow windows, as you saw in some of the earlier presentations, as you mentioned, the color, very bright. With this design, everything's very squeezed in very tightly. So, we're able to meet the, the 25% translucent material on the front of the, I'm sorry, I'll say the, the side-facing Market Street, but on the, what would be considered the front of the building, which is along the parking stalls, we're only at about 9.8%. So, we're asking for a modification of that, and again, it's, it's because of the mechanical rooms and things of that nature, bathrooms are on that front side, you can only have windows into those that would be translucent for security reasons, so they weren't able to make, meet that, that requirement for that side.
Any questions on that one, gentlemen? Okay, hearing none. All right, Don, did you have one? No? All right, continue, gentlemen.
The next modification we requested was Section 325-202.C6, which is the clear-site triangle. A, the, that section requires a 100-foot clear-site triangle for what it considers roadways for the, the town place center. With the design we have, this is more of a driveway, we're not going to be able to have access, you know, this is not something that we could in the future have a connection here, go into the Home Depot site or an adjoining site because of the grade differences. I think here in the back, we have about a 10-foot difference in grade between the Home Depot site and ours. Further with this kind of design, we do have a retaining wall that we have to add on this left side of the building in order to raise this portion of the site up, so that we can match the elevation at the Verizon side, since, since we're limited to what we can grade into there. So, the request we have there is to have that modified to a 75-foot clear-site triangle, which is what you would typically see with a more of a driveway or, you know, like a street intersection. We felt that was a more good compromise, we still wanted to provide something, but 100-foot, 100-foot here in the front would be, you know, would affect the landscape even, even too, that we wanted to provide in that buffer area, even though we were requesting that waiver. So, by going to 75 feet, we can add landscaping along the side here. Also, we're, in this scenario, we're only a right-in, right-out, so there's a little less maybe concern about having to look both directions for, for traffic coming in inbound at both sides.
Gentlemen, questions on this site triangle?
Yeah, I don't know if it's possible, but 100 feet looking to the left, which is the direction traffic is coming down the road, 75 to the right, I mean, you're not, you don't need to look that way to pull out, because you can't go across to the other side anyway.
Correct.
And if I could clarify, the, you know, this is effectively a right-in, right-out car wash, because at that location, Market Street has a median, and, and the clear-site triangle is a, I don't want to be critical of the planning people in the world, but it's more of a planning tool, doesn't really define how safe it is to look left, but they will be able to see vehicles coming a pretty good distance down Market Street. And so, I think if you're concerned about safety, I don't think that is an issue. You know, if they wanted to put the bigger clear-site triangle in, they would have eliminated more landscaping, and, and they did fit two, or three good-sized street trees in that area, and I can't remember, we did still keep a bench out front, did we not?
Yes, we have actually two benches here on, out front.
So, they have the wider sidewalks. We were trying to get the public plaza out there, and I think that the discussion about the playground and providing access to the playground in the back was probably something that came more out of the Planning Commission when they were critiquing this plan.
And adding on, Mr.?
I think we found in one of our recent discussions that that falls more in line with what it actually says in the town center overlay.
Agreed.
And I, I will concede the site triangles, John, because you have the alphabet soup after your name that I don't.
Yeah.
Another thing I will add, as Mr. Luciani said there, we, we are meeting the PennDOT safe site distance requirements. I know it's a little hard to see here, but there's a piece of text here right at the entrance, so I know we were meeting that, those requirements as far as what PennDOT concerns, making sure you have the distance you need there.
Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, continue, Chris.
I'll hit the last two here. 325-204 is the public plaza. Again, we're, we're kind of going to incorporate the public plaza as being part of the playground area here in the back. We're going to include benches in there as required in the, in the, in the ordinance, as well as the trash cans and landscaping. So, proceed here to our lighting, our landscape plan. We are adding some landscaping here back in the backside, some trees behind, some bushes behind the, what would be the playground area, as long as some landscape tree here in this area. That area will be lighted with the west of the site, so, you know, the entire site will be lighted while the hours that it's open, so there will be plenty of visibility there. The, as far as the waiver request on there, as I was looking through it again, we kind of do meet, I think, all the requirements. I mean, the, the one section, which is 325-204I, is that the public plaza has to be accessible from pedestrian sidewalks or visible from, you know, I think it's pedestrian sidewalks. So, that was kind of, I think, more what we're looking at, the issue here, because we're pushing it so far in the back of the site, it's not that it's going to be very visible from the street itself, but we do have access via sidewalks that people can get to it and use it if, 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 if wanted. And the last one we have on here is 325-26A3A regarding planting islands. The, that section of the ordinance requires that all parking landscape islands have at least one minimum tree in them. We're asking a, a modification to not have to do that. Reason being for that, and I will go back here to the, our design, this system, as we kind of stated earlier with the challenges of it, trying to get the, there we go. The, the site here, we have to come up at about a, I think it's like a 5% or 6% slope till we kind of level out here, and then, and then sort of gradually increase to a slope here, and then we start going back down towards the back of the site with grades. So, this ended up us having to have two different stormwater systems. One that's going to maintain the water from the building in the front parking lot, and then one in the back that's going to maintain the majority of the, of the stormwater from the rest of the site. The, the stormwater section, system in the back is, is a fairly, right now, a large system. This is currently being worked on. It has gotten a bit smaller, but the concern was with some of these areas here, as you can see this island right here, we actually have a concrete pad there for a vacuum pump system. That's what would be connected through all these parking spaces to, to like a central vac system that would, that would operate the individual stalls. So, that coupled with the fact that we feel our system's going to be fairly large and have to be under this area, we don't want to be having trees, trees really can't be in the islands over top that underground stormwater system, because it's going to cause issues with that system. So, again, we're meeting all the, we are with the design, including all the landscape required for both the buffer yards and the parking. We just kind of shift them in areas where they can kind of fit in and, and be worked into the site. I do believe as we proceed, if that stormwater system can get smaller and we can free up some of those islands, we probably will put trees in those as we go through the LD set, but at this point, we're kind of still working through that, how that's going to actually fish out, you know, turn out to be what's the final design is.
Gentlemen, any questions on the last two waiver requests, public plaza or the planting
I have a question on the public plaza. I think I heard you say that there is pedestrian access to the public plaza?
That is correct. I'll try to highlight it here with the zoom.
Can't see your...
They can't see that part, I forget. So, here's the red site. So, along the front here, we have the, the 12-foot pedestrian sidewalk. There will be a access right here, you can see on the right-hand side, you're right. Right here on the right-hand side, we have a sidewalk that's going to go up the, up the driveway, a crosswalk that's going to come across the driveway, the sidewalk will then go across the front of the site. So, again, if somebody's interested in learning more about the site, they can walk in here by hand and, you know, walk into the, and talk to somebody, one of the, one of the employees to learn more about the site, and then that will continue back here with the sidewalk that will be accessible to the, the playground area.
So, there will be a sidewalk across the escape lane?
There will be a, yes, yeah, there is, there is one. There's a sidewalk right here that comes up at the lane, and you probably, I probably should add a crosswalk with our revision, that's something we did miss. We'll put a crosswalk in there to kind of give that across the escape lane. And then just to, as we were talking earlier, I know some of the comments that came up here about the stacking and, and vehicle, vehicle turning into some of the sites. here about the stacking and vehicle, vehicle turning into some of the sites. Would you have, so, looking at the stacking here, and again, I know you won't be able to see, so this, if you have this exhibited on your electronically, the one here on the left was more of a stacking exhibit. This was to show that, you know, when the vehicles come in here, I believe here we were getting about, off the top of my head, I can't remember, was 15 or, yeah, I think that's what it was. Let me see if I can read that real quick. Yeah, so it looks like we have, if the, so on normal days, when the vehicles come in here and turn at this section, we're going to have about 15 vehicles that can stack within this area. And then coming out of the vehicles, we have about three vehicles that can stack in the exit lane and another two that would be able to queue here before they would turn out onto, onto Market Street. On busier days, as Nick said, they can close this off, and I believe we have an additional seven or eight that we can add back on this section here. And that's not even counting into effect any spaces that might have to, you know, continue down that driveway as it gets back out to Market Street. So feeling we have a very good amount of stacking available there to support any concerns that might come up about vehicles backing up and whatnot. We also did this middle exhibit, so we took a large F-150 four-by-four truck, kind of has one of the biggest turning radiuses, and wanted to make sure to show that that truck leaving here and making a turn on the Market Street would not impede a vehicle coming in at the same time. So again, just taking two large F-150 trucks to show that they both could pass through there at the same time. We also did right here kind of a backup example that if that truck was at that first spot and was backing out and then pulling out this way at the same time while the vehicle was coming in, that it wouldn't impede the, the right side of the lane for a vehicle entering the site. Back here, you'll see the same truck. Again, large truck would be able to make that turn to the inside lane. More likely, they would use the outside lane because it would be an easier turn, but we wanted to still show that it would be able to make that turn as well as the turn in the back. And then the last one here on the right, this was for emergency vehicles, fire truck. Fire truck would be able to make the turn into the site, and then would be able to go back. And when it would leave the site, it would have to make a three-point turn to get, to turn around and get back out the site, but could utilize this larger area that we have right here to make that, that maneuver to get back out of the site. And going back, what you were saying about the garbage can, the garbage vehicle, I know we did some designs, they just didn't end up here. We'll make sure they get added as we go, if we, if we are able to continue the process with the LD so that we meet any concerns that might be with that.
Gentlemen, any other questions for the applicant?
I have one question. I don't know if it's for the applicant, but I want to make sure I understand our timing situation in terms of approval of the plan, not of this meeting, or approval of the conditional use request.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak to that, Don. We do have the regular meeting coming up at 7:00. There's a couple of different options. I would like to allow a quick public comment if anyone wants to speak on the proposed development. There's a couple of options if--
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, sorry, I can, are you able to hear me now, Mark?
Yes, thank you.
So there's a couple of options. If I do want to allow a public comment, we can either, either the hearing can be closed tonight and a decision could be made tonight. You could close the hearing tonight, and then you would have, I believe it's 45 days from there to issue a decision. We also could continue the hearing, although I don't know if that's needed because I think we're getting pretty close here. So I would say those are the three options. And as far as the board making a decision, if the board would like to discuss conditions, we can move into an executive session to do that because, yeah, I do want to make sure we're just clear on the modifications that are being requested. So those are the, those are the options. I'm willing to do any of them. I think it might make the most sense to get, get through public comment, but I also don't want to cut the app if there's anything else.
No, I think, you know, unless you guys have questions for us, we just wanted to kind of express what the modifications were and why they kind of came about, but, yeah, I think we're fine.
And just, I didn't see any stormwater modifications, the applicant's not asking for stormwater modifications at this time, correct?
At this time, we're not. After talking with Mr. Luciani, he kind of suggested we wait to see if that's something we need to deal with through the land development process.
Yeah, I think it would be more, more proper during the land development stage. So I guess then at this time, if the board's okay with it, I would, I would open it up to public comment on the proposed development. And just for, yeah, and just for anyone who wants to speak, just come up, state your name and provide comment.
My name is John Slatkay, S-L-A-T-K-Y. I suggest you put it in. Competition is good. It makes everybody better. And this fills a niche because if you go to Mr. Car Wash, you can't vacuum your car, and if you want them to do it, it costs you about 40 bucks.
And if you could also state your address, sorry, I did forget to say--
3673 Cimarron Road, across from Don.
Thanks, neighbor.
No, I would, I was in the car wash business, okay? And this fills a niche. It does because if you, I don't want to get into the details of car washing, but you have basically three different types, and this is one that's in the middle because you can, you can vacuum your car yourself and you can get it washed. If you go to Mr. Car Wash, you can get it washed, but you can't get a vacuum unless you pay a lot of money. If you go to the self-service, you got to pay for the vacuums. And if you go through their automatic, they can maybe wash about eight cars an hour anyway. Okay? My suggestion is put it in. I speak for all the people from Springersbury that didn't show up.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I have to look online. I can't--
Yes, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment on the conditional use hearing? Please raise your hand. Raise hand button on your Zoom feed. Let the record show, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand on Zoom for public comment to this meeting. Okay. Well, gentlemen, we have three minutes before the next meeting, so we can, as we say, enter into executive session, may delay the start of our next meeting, which is something I would recommend, and so I would move for executive session.
Now?
We could get, Don, unless you, if, we could conference call you in. If you don't want to do--
What's the purpose of an executive session now?
Just if we needed to debate any conditions with regard to the conditional use.
We don't debate conditions in executive session, do we?
I think that's to clarify legal questions about various conditions.
Yeah, it's more so, Don, to just talk about, you know, what the conditions, kind of the wording of those conditions. Now, those conditions would need to be announced in the public meeting, but it's up to the board. I mean, if we want to do that, or another, you could, you could close the hearing and then announce the decision. You'd have 45 days from closing that hearing. I would say those are kind of the two options at this point.
I personally don't see any reason for an executive session, and I think we should talk about this in public, but if somebody has a real concern about a legal issue, then we need an executive session.
Yeah. I would say from my perspective, it sounds like the board is on the same page. I will say, if a decision needs to be made, I'd like a decision to be made on the, is it six or seven modifications that were asked for?
Seven.
Okay. Because I'd like to make a motion on those modifications and then a motion also on the conditional use approval itself.
Corey, I have one question. The mention was made that stormwater is not an issue tonight, but you're going to need a stormwater modification. John, if I'm reading your review right, they're going from 100% meadow to 20% meadow, and the reason they can't accommodate it is because the size of the bases would expand further than the property lines, so.
That, that's a possibility, but in past practice, the way we've handled store, conditional uses is if it, if it's a conditional use design function, sidewalk, landscaping, setbacks, whatever, in that conditional use, we, you guys get to view it in this format. Stormwater's almost for every plan, and that could be handled in the land development, and it's probably more appropriate as they get further into the design. And if they can't meet that design in some hardship, they could ask for a waiver at that time, and that's where we'll look at it. You'll get another bite at the apple.
Thank you for that answer. I'm comfortable.
All right, gentlemen. Any other questions, comments?
Not for me.
Do I hear a motion?
So--
All we have to do is close the hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you want to make a motion to close the conditional use hearing for Shiny Shell Car Wash Coldwater Development LLC, you can make that motion.
All right. So I move to close the hearing for Shiny Shell Car Wash LLC. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Cox. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Conditional use hearing closed.
We're actually one minute over for our next meeting.
All right. Does any of you gentlemen need a break or anything? All right, we'll get right into the next one. Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please join me in our opening ceremony with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag--
To the flag of the United States of America--
And to the republic--
And to the republic.
Our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I do want to take this opportunity to announce that we, as a board, have had two executive sessions, one on February 28, 2004, 9:30 PM with regard to the Mount Zion Commons. We have held a second of executive session on March 6, 6:30 PM, also on Mount Zion Commons. At this point, I would like to open it up for communications from citizens. If anyone has some comments this evening, I remind you that we'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes, if anyone has any public comment. Are we having anyone from, to issue public comment?
Yeah, if anyone would like to make a public comment, if you could step up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I don't have, I don't have anything to say. I'm just here because I thought we were going to vote tonight, so, and so now I'm just curious to what's going on at the executive council meeting. And I do want to thank everybody who, I know several people sent letters and emails, and I just want to thank people for reading them and then responding to them. Thank you, Charles. I appreciate that very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Carol Thibodeau, 72 Eisenhower. All right.
So just for clarity, there is, the decision on the conditional use is not on the agenda this evening.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other comments from citizens this evening? Any comments online? Again, if you are using Zoom, please raise your hand to identify that you wish to speak. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next--
Charles?
Yes, sir.
Just to, just to clarify, that conditional use has been moved to the 27th of March, which is a Wednesday night, not a Thursday night. Our regularly scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, the 27th of March, and that is when we will debate and vote on conditional use for the corner that you're interested in.
All right. Thank you for that point of information, Mr. Swan. All right. So we will now move on unless there's other comments from the supervisors on the matter. We'll move on to engineering reports, and we have Diana.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have no updates to the report that was submitted.
All right. Any questions for Diana on the environmental engineer report? All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go on to the civil engineer report. John?
Two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I was here at our last meeting, and I failed to congratulate and welcome everybody to surveyors week, or engineers week, but now it's surveyors week, so I thought I would mention that. And it's also Pi Day if you are, I just have a couple of quick, quick updates. Today, and I think I told you in our engineers report that Triplett Springs, Springers Retreat had requested, started the process for road dedication, and we spent a good amount of time today out at Springers Retreat, and there's still a lot of work to be done. Mr. Crables Crews brought their typical snowplow and street maintenance equipment up, and we have some challenges in those smaller cul-de-sacs, and the developer is cordial and agreeing to try to correct any deficiencies that would hinder the snowplowing operation. So that will be an ongoing project for some period of time, and while Mr. Crable and Mr. Heilman here, I wanted to thank, or here, I wanted to thank them for their cooperation today, but probably in the next six months, there will be updates on that as Kinsley works through closing out that development. The other thing I want to point out is there are payments for the signal work that's ongoing at Haynes and Eastern and Memory Lane and Industrial. Talked about that a few times. At Eastern Boulevard and Haynes Road, they are still doing some concrete work out there, so that work is ongoing. You'll continue to see some inspections and billings on those projects. And then finally, Kinsley had requested, probably before Christmas, a bond elimination for the modern industrial park. If you recall, that, that's immediately adjacent to 3750 East Market Street. And because of the time of year, it's hard to see or determine if a tree is alive or not alive because of the leaves are off if it's a deciduous tree. So I had forgotten that when the plan for 3750 East Market Street came in, they took off the entire frontage of that property along Market Street and assigned it to 3750. Well, Kinsley had that as part of their buffer yard in the front, and now it's owned by 3750. So we were holding landscape money on a property that Kinsley no longer owned, and it's getting redeveloped, as you know, so that's a pretty easy decision to just eliminate that bond. So that was probably my misunderstanding, but I get it now, and there will be a buffer yard. There's one there now. It's going to get wiped out with the development of 3750, and 3750 will then rebuild it because they have it on their plan, so no need to hold that money. With that, and I apologize for long update, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions from John, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that explanation on the bond reduction. Thank you, John. All right, gentlemen, we move to the consent agenda, and we have several items on here. Is there anything that any of you would like to pull out for separate discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move for adoption of the consent agenda items A through L.
There's a motion--
Second.
Then a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We now make our way to bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. We now make our way to bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. First item here is authorization for the township manager to execute York County Library's 2024 agreement for satellite library services in an amount not to exceed $5,100.
Board, this is a normal, every year we go through the agreement for the library satellite services. It's used extensively by our residents, and I recommend 2024 agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Mark on the question? If not, I'll entertain.
I move to authorize for township manager to execute the York County Library's 2024 agreement in amount not to exceed $5,100.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is an authorization to purchase new fire alarm system for the Public Works Building through Berkshire Systems Group, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $48,948. And that's a PCA Co-Stars contract number 40E22-129.
This is, recently, we discovered that the fire alarm system in the Public Works Building was nonoperational. This is an unbudgeted expense, but there is funds available, there are funds available in our capital improvements plan to cover these expenses. I recommend approval.
Danny, you know you can.
I move to authorize the purchase of the new fire alarm system as stated.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the subject?
Danny, you know you can get some smoke alarms at Home Depot for about 13 bucks a piece, so. It was just a thought.
I'm relatively sure that's not going to meet code, but hey, we can check with John.
Could you use your microphone, Danny? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
I am relatively sure that that's not going to meet code, but we can certainly check with John.
Thank you for getting that on the record. All right, I have a motion.
I have a quest, I have a question.
All right. Mr. Bishop?
Why is a city of York permit application included in the estimate?
It's just the permit application. I don't know why they put that. They were a bit confused.
Is that a matter that warrants correction?
No.
All right. All right, we have a motion and discussion. Any further discussion, gentlemen? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we now move to authorization to award bid for grinder pump replacements to Dolly Construction Corp. in amount not to exceed $227,250.
This project is a sewer project, Springitz Berry Township Sewer Project. This is included in the 2024 Sewer Capital Improvements Fund. It is a necessary item. There are any questions, Danny Crable, specific questions about the project, Danny Crable can address those.
How many years is it going to take to get those pumps, Danny?
Actually, they are looking to move forward very quickly. They've called me a number of times already, so I don't think we're going to be in the years. I think it'll be this year for sure, early this year.
So none of these pumps are suffering from COVID?
No, no. I believe that these have been inoculated, buddy.
Any other questions for Danny?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for authorization to award the bid for grinder pump replacements to Dolly Construction Corp. in an amount not to exceed $227,250.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the opportunity to authorize to advertise bids for the 2024 Annual Road Paving and Road Materials Project.
This item is just a request for permission to advertise for bids. Once the bids are received, then that'll come back to the board for authorization to proceed with the contract.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I.
I move to authorize the advertisement of bids for 2024 Annual Road Paving and Road Materials Project.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second? I have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We are now at the East York Pumping Station Rehabilitation Project, and this is an action to reject all of the bids due to higher-than-expected prices. This does require an action item. Mark, you want to give us more details?
Simply, the bids, all of the bids came in much higher than we anticipated, much higher than we had budgeted. This is something that we'll regroup budget appropriately for in 2025 and rebid in early 2025.
Does this free up money in this budget that has not been used? And are we going to move this, move that money around or use it for something else? What's your thought on that?
This is a Springitz Berry Sewer Fund expense again, like the former, or the project above, so it'll just sit in there. There aren't any plans for it, but it will be there for future years.
Any other?
So if you push this into 2025, you have the money that was already budgeted plus whatever you add to it for next year.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mark? I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, to reject it.
I move to reject all bids due to higher-than-expected pricing.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. We now move to the next item on the agenda. And under subdivisions in land development, we have the conditional use 2023-0002 for shiny shell car wash at 3021 East Market Street. Gentlemen, we just concluded our conditional use hearing on this. This is on the agenda and gives us an opportunity to make any action item on that. Corey, any additional words you want to add while we're here at this point in the agenda?
I don't believe so, but if the board is inclined to make a decision tonight, again, I would just make a decision. I would make two motions, one on the seven modifications requested, and then one on the conditional use approval itself.
So, gentlemen, we've had the opportunity here from the applicant. We know the waiver's before us. Just wanted to see if any of you had any further questions of staff that we have here available, or any questions, or something to discuss amongst ourselves with regard to the plan, or any other action that you'd like to take on this plan this year this evening.
I think we heard from, go ahead, Don. I was just going to say, I was personally comfortable with all of the modifications, so.
I was going to say that I was also gratified to hear that we had public support for this.
You didn't hang around. I can run across the street and get them again, though.
And I guess the only thing I'll add, just for clarity, conditional use process is just to determine if that use is proper for the property on which it's requested for. The applicant, if the conditional use approval is granted, still needs to go through the land development phase, subject to township engineer review, solicitor review. So this is just the first step of that process. But with that being said, the board would like to make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it is an appropriate use. I'm going to make a motion with reference to the conditional use application CU 2023-0002 for shiny shell car wash cold water development LLC. I move to approve the requested seven modifications slash waivers as listed.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, a second?
That was Dawn. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Corey, you need a second one?
Yeah, I believe that one was for the seven modifications, so if the board would like to make a motion separately on just the conditional use application as a whole.
I move with reference to CU 2023-0020002 for shiny shell car wash cold water development LLC to approve the conditional use application as presented.
I have a motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, congratulations, gentlemen. All right, we now move to communications from supervisors. Gentlemen, do you have anything here for the good of the order this evening?
I just have one thing. I noticed that Mr. Luciani recognized that engineers get a week and surveyors get a week, but I think that Pi Day deserves, since it's only one, deserves proper recognition.
And did you know if you actually flip that around, the four becomes a P, the one becomes an I, and the three becomes an E? Did you know that?
I've never met a pie I didn't like particularly cherry.
So how many digits can you recite, Don?
3.1416. That's all I care about.
3.141592. I think that's about as far as I can go.
All right, gentlemen, thank you, Don, for that enlightening discussion, and I'm glad we got our 3.14 on Pi Day all taken care of. All right. I do have one comment. I did receive a very notable thank you from one of the property owners back here on Concord Road thanking the Board of Supervisors for extending Davey's drive out to Market Street today, and they say it's really been helpful for them and to give them some greater access to Market Street. So I'm just passing that along to the board.
To piggyback on that, I had lunch at the first post, and I was amazed at the amount of traffic that it's already carrying.
Okay.
It's been well-used.
Great. All right. Thank you, Bob. All right, we come now to, looks like the solicitors' report. We don't have any committee reports, correct?
Correct.
All right, we are to the solicitors' report. Corey, I don't know if you have any update for us on anything in particular?
Yeah, I only have one item. James prepared an amendment to the township meeting rules policy. That change just kind of memorializes the virtual attendance to meetings, and that change just says that the township supervisors are permitted to attend virtually so long as that there's two-way communication, so that they can hear people in the room and the people in the room can hear them. I think the only other provision is that in an event where all the township supervisors are virtual, that the meeting rooms still be held open so that the residents can provide feedback and comments. So I guess I would just be looking for authorization of that change.
Okay, so that would be a form of an action item and a motion of the policy.
Actually, I think that's on the agenda coming up.
Oh, is it?
It's item 10. 10A.
Yeah. Yep.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
So we are at, as an action item, at the solicitors' report. Let me see.
10A.
10A is the action item of the very policy that Corey just summarized for us. So it's, based on that report, it's consistent with what we've discussed previously.
So I would move for authorization to amend the Springitz Berry Township meeting rules policy as written.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we now move to the managers' report. Mark?
I do not have anything to add to my written report, but be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mark here this evening relative to his managers' report? Thank you, Mark, for all that you do. We now move to ordinances and resolutions. We now have a resolution number 2024-31, authorizing supplemental appropriation from the liquid fuels tax fund for repairs and maintenance of traffic control signals.
This is needed. If you recall, we have a new traffic signal maintenance provider as the start of this year. Already, they have found several things that needed repair, which exceeds what we have budgeted in that line, specific line item in the liquid fuels budget. So we're asked, this resolution's asking to add an additional $125,000 to that line item. That additional $125,000 is coming out of the liquid fuels fund balance.
Any questions of Mark on the matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the authorization based on approval of this resolution.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2024-31, amending our budget, authorizing the supplemental appropriation.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are now down to the old business section of the agenda. We have some items here. Is there anything that any of you gentlemen wish to discuss here this evening?
Any issues with traffic calming 10th Avenue, 11th Avenue, Whiteford Road area with the construction that's going on still?
I have not had any input from those residents, and Danny's shaking his head no, so he must not have either. I would assume sometime later this month we'll put the speed humps back out.
That's it for me.
All right, Dawn or Bob, anything?
No.
Okay, we now have moved to an item in new business, and that's authorization to create a full-time position of parks and rec.
Parks and rec coordinator. This position is included in the 2024 Operational General Fund budget. This position, as I stated in my report, is needed to grow our, to continue offering all the services that we do to all of our residents and businesses and visitors, plus grow our parks and rec department for more offerings that we can provide to the public.
It is a budgeted item. It's something that I know that you and I have talked about over the course of several years, just for the need for it. Any comments, questions for Mark on the request?
Unclear exactly what action is required. Are we authorizing a position? Are we approving a job description? What do you need?
Authorizing the position because the position. Authorizing the position because the position is a new position. So, anytime there's a new position added to our overall staffing numbers, I like to have the board's authorization to do so.
I think we actually agreed to this informally several years ago now, and I think this is a really good idea.
So, just building on Don's question, what does authorization do? Does that then create the job description?
It creates the position that we're adding another position to the township staff.
This allows you then to create the job description and then post and go out and hire.
Correct.
Okay, so then certainly that...
Once, if I get approval, then we'll go from there.
So, then we can get into the...
And hire.
All right, okay, with the job description and the script, all that detail. Okay.
I move to authorize the creation of a full-time position of Parks and Recreation Coordinator.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, those are all the items on the agenda this evening. I'll certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
Is there a second? All right. Don't need a second for adjournment. Meeting adjourned.